September 19, 2023. Bucyrus Regional Council Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
Roll call, please.
McKeever.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Wireball.
Potter.
Here.
Sherrick.
Here.
Spiegel.
Here.
And Young.
Here.
All right, you have before you the minutes of the September 5, 2023 Regular Council Meeting. Does anybody have any additions or corrections?
I'm going to move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Potter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You also have the August 24, 2023 Special Council Meeting. Does anybody have any additions or corrections?
I move accept.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Spiegel, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You also have the July 6, 2023 Special Council Meeting. Does anybody have any additions or corrections?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We also have the June 22, 2023 Special Council Meeting. Does anybody have any additions or corrections?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Potter, a second by Mr. Young. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for visitors to speak? Seeing none. Do we have any petitions or communications? No. Seeing none. Standing committee reports. Plating?
Nothing at this time.
Public lands and buildings?
Um, nothing at this time.
Health and safety?
No report.
Finance?
Nothing at this time.
Economic development?
Nothing to report.
Service?
No report.
Traffic commission?
No report. Not present.
Report to city officers. Mr. Mayor?
I have, do not have a formal report, but I do want to just say a few words of thank you to the folks that worked on a very successful fly-in day at the airport. Had the great crowd and a lot of nice planes, a good turnout, hot air balloons. It just was a nice day and raised some money for some of the things that they're planning out there. And as well as the Preservation Society had a nice breakfast, and we thank them for that. And finally, the Kiwanis. We buttoned down the splash pad for the year, and I think by all measuring sticks, it was a very successful, very well-received year for the splash pad, a great addition to an already great park. So, thank you to Kiwanis for that. Thank you. That's all my report.
If there are questions from there. All right, Safety Service Director report.
There's Jeff's report. I'm going to refer the OPWC to finance. Driven excavating has started the Northwest Trunk Sewer Project. If you've driven out in that area, see a bunch of equipment by Holy Trinity there. That's the first phase, first of three phases. Sulphur Springs and Locust Grove Waterline has just been sent to the EPA for approval. The project was supposed to be a boring project underground, which most of those are, but there's a lot of drainage pipes apparently along the way, so we're going to have open dig. Just going to take a little bit longer. Starting this week, the railroad crossing at Oakwood will be getting new gates and a new sidewalk. We continue to have budget meetings, and we hope you're ready sometime in October to present it to Finance Committee and then the full council a little later after that. The aggregation program is open to all businesses as well as individuals in the city. If you're not on aggregation program, you can still join. We do have very good rates. Just call the mayor's office or stop up. Omni Fiber is continuing to install fiber optics throughout town, and they are restoring any areas that have been disturbed by digging. It's a big project, so I have patience with them. It's going to take a while. Bright Speed is coming in very soon. We're looking at their permits right now, and as soon as we sign off on those, they'll get their fiber optic program going. The advantage they have is since they are already a utility in town, they've got poles, so they can use their own poles. So, it's probably going to go quicker. There will be some boring, but most of those will be on poles. And Jeff also mentions the airport fly-in success on fly-in events Saturday with a nice success, too. Those are the kind of events, you know, just tie on Jeff's. They just make Bucyrus special. We just have to encourage that of service, you know, to make sure the people, well, we got plenty of people that work in these, and they always can use more. So, jump in with both feet. Join one of these services or get involved in your church, right? Traffic light poles are being replaced at Hopley. It's been an ongoing project. We've been waiting for the product to come in for like two years, I believe. So, they're going to be right at the Hopley and East, that whole intersection right there is going to be done. And then they're going to go over to Mansfield and Walnut. And there's a few more areas that could be addressed in the future as the Muni funds start to grow again. Trick or Treat has been proclaimed to be on Sunday, October 29, from 2:00 to 4:00. And don't forget Spooktacular, our annual event, will be at Allmiller Park again. It's always a lot of fun. And it's going to be on Saturday, October 21. The time has changed this year. We're moving it up one hour, moving it from 3:00 to 6:00. And that's all Jeff's got.
I was saying the 28th, I think's trunk or treat at a trillion.
Trunk or treat at trillion.
Okay.
I think that's 2:00 to 4:00 as well.
Who's sponsoring that? Kind of like I can ask her. Do you know or?
I would say I thought it was a bunch of the churches and local.
Okay.
And there's a craft show inside Trillium at the same time.
All right, why we?
What day did you say that was?
The 28th.
We'll see if Bonnie can get that on her website, too.
I'd say, and on the 7th, there's Fall Festival out of Colonel Crawford, which is a huge thing each year. And it looks like Bay Soccer is attempting to do a similar thing on the 7th as well. Hopefully, next year, they'll put it on a different weekend. I don't think they realized it was the same thing, same day.
Yeah. Yeah, they're having a car show, too.
Yep. Both have craft shows, both have crafters, both have.
As I drove here tonight, Bay Soccer is underway. It's packed down in Lane Street Field.
We have a lot more kids again this year. It's great.
Yeah, it's really nice.
And they're doing adult soccer during the year, so if we have adults that want to play soccer, they can get hold of them and sign up.
Great.
At least they'll want to be during the summer.
Can you get a number for us sometime? You don't have to do it right now, but.
Yes, email. They've got a Facebook page.
Okay.
For Bucyrs Area Soccer.
Great.
And you can message them right on there or email them, because I think they've got the email list at a couple of different places.
Okay. It's a good program, a lot of fun, a lot of fun.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a, yes, sorry, go ahead.
So, the, just want to ask about the referral to the Finance Committee for the OPWC, because originally, a couple committees ago, a couple council meetings ago, that was referred to service and finance.
It's just to allow us to apply for the grant.
So, we're skipping the service altogether?
Yes, since we're, it's not going to have anything to do with service, and I think is, I, law director would agree.
Because originally, it was set that way, so we just need to have it.
Yeah, I think we just need to allow us to apply for the grant, which is a financial issue, so.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up.
Yes.
I've got a couple of questions. The first one, on the railroad crossing, we talked a while ago about an alternative plan.
Yes, we did.
Are we assuming with them putting the money into this that they've gotten away from that idea?
I think we can safely assume.
All right. My next question, I had asked about the aggregation program. If you had previously dropped out and we renewed it, are you back in or are you still out?
No, you're still out.
Still out, okay. And then I had a third question. Omni Fiber, somebody called and asked, when will they start selling services right now?
They're selling service right now. You can go online.
Well, so somebody asked, I went on their website and it said that, gave a message that they're not right now, so they're taking names and information.
John, would you address that, John?
Right now, you can go onto Omni Fiber's website, and you can sign up with them. They are not starting their service. Their service isn't live yet. They have submitted a permit application to install what's called the main backbone line, and that's the line that picks up their internet outside of town, brings it into town, and then it gets distributed to everybody that signs up. So, they haven't even started that part of it yet, and that's going to run through the heart of town, through downtown, and out Plymouth Street, and so that's going to take a while. But you can, anybody can go on there, they can log on to their website, get signed up, so that way, when they do go live in your neighborhood, you'll be ready to go.
Did they give an indication of a timeline for that?
Well, it's all predicated on when we allow them to get started, but I can tell you, it's going to be, it's going to be a while.
Months, years?
I would say it's, no, not years. I would say they may be working on that for, you know, a few weeks to get that backbone line installed. Then, once they get the backbone line installed, now the other team has to come in and actually install all the fiber optic lines into that conduit. So, they may be a month out before they start lighting up any of the areas that have been installed so far. But, yeah, good question.
Thanks.
Yep.
Need anything else? Okay, we have a referral for the 2024 OPWC project to finance. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
That was Mr. McKeever?
Yes.
That's okay. I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Mr. Law Director?
No report tonight.
No report. Ms. Lewis?
I apologize for my absence at the beginning of the month. I wanted to thank council for accepting my documents that I supplied and moving forward with the legislative process. Local government services from the State Auditor's Office and Perry and Associates has submitted our yearly audit report this September. Thank you to all the department heads and employees I've had to harass the past few months. Your patience is appreciated. Our 10-year contract with Perry and Associates comes to an end this year. Due to state requirements, the City of Bucyrs must use another private company for audits after 10 years. Normally, between there, there is a year where the state will take over just to make sure nothing has slipped through the cracks, but because there's been such an overwhelming workload placed on state audit, state has allowed us to contract privately again. Our office is currently in negotiations with a few firms to replace Perry and Associates for our 2023 audit taking place in 2024. I would also like to refer, and these first two bullet points are my fault, I, this kind of happened in February when I was newly appointed to the position, and I wasn't quite sure of the flow of things. So, if you recall, I had made a document for Jeff Dunn and Jeff Wagner showing that there were money for these projects in the stormwater fund, but I never followed up on that, so sorry. So, first referral to Finance Committee, the appropriation of funds for the Unger Park Trail Bike Path as an emergency. To Finance Committee, the appropriation of funds for the Northwest Trunk Sewer as an emergency. And then after that, to Finance Committee appropriating fun, or appropriating money into the pool salary line as an emergency. And to Finance Committee, transferring money to reimburse enterprise funds for work done in the county. Thank you.
Is that also an emergency?
I don't believe that one needs to be.
Okay, you said one that's not on the list.
Yes, it's the first one. The appropriation of funds for the Unger Park Trail/Bike Path as an emergency.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
We'll do these collectively. They all go to finance. We have appropriations for the pool salary line, the enterprise funds, the Northwest Trunk.
And Unger Park.
And the Unger Park and Bike Path.
I'll make a motion collectively for those four items. Unger Park, Northwest Sewer, Pool Salary, and the reimbursement for work done.
I'll second.
It's finance, sorry.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Spiegel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The Treasurer has a report. You have a report submitted by the Treasurer. May I have a motion to accept and file?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Potter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And you also have, we don't have anything from Chief Ostenheimer. We have Chief Schwamly's report. May I have a motion to accept and file?
I'll make a motion to accept and file.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to accept the city officers' reports as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Spiegel, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We need to appoint Dan Wireball in place of Ms. Sherrick on the Crawford County Parks Board, so may I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Spiegel. All those in.
Nope.
December 31, I'll get it right.
Yes, you will.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Young. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for visitors to speak on standing and special committees and city officer reports?
Vicki DeShawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive. First off, I have a question to the mayor. Has to do with the three-year mill and pave. You know, we had talked about that back on September 5, and I had asked you if there were any streets done in 2023 that were not on the three-year mill and pave plan, and you said you would have an answer for me at the September 7 committee meetings, and you weren't there at those meetings, so I wondered if you.
I thought your question was about Pleasant, why Pleasant Hill was taken off.
No.
Okay. Well, I don't have the answer yet, then. I thought about Pleasant Hill. Sorry.
Okay.
What do you actually need to know? Let me write it down for you.
And you had me repeat it at the September 5 meeting.
Do you want me to go check the minutes?
Sure. It's down there exactly.
You want to, okay.
What I want to know is, there was a three-year mill and pave, mill and pave plan. There were streets listed that were to be done for 2023.
Right.
We know that there's streets that were not done. What I want to know is, were there any streets done in 2023 that were not on that 2023 mill and pave plan?
The streets were done, but not on 2023. Okay.
So, Thursday, maybe you have an answer?
I should have an answer, please.
Okay, great.
I plan on being here.
Okay, thank you. Next is the Service Safety Director's report. Now, on the OPWC 2024, just a reminder that on July 31, when the Service Safety Director gave his report, he referred the project to the Finance Committee. So, it's already in finance. However, when the committees met on August 24, the Service Committee discussed it, and I questioned their discussing it because it wasn't referred to their committee. And at that time, Mr. Spiegel questioned Mr. Wagner and said, "Do you need it from us or from finance also?" And Wagner said, "I'm assuming it would come to you guys first, then finance." So, it was put on hold, waiting for a referral to be made to Service, so that they could discuss it and then pass it on to Finance. But if I'm understanding you correctly, you're saying it doesn't have to go to Service at all?
I'm referring to.
Come back to Service, once the project, to approve the project, but just to approve the Service Director to go out for bid, not to go out for bid, to go out and put out an application for grants that would just come from Finance. But once the, if we do get the money, once that comes in, the actual project would be approved by Service and then funded by Finance.
So, we're saying right now only Finance needs to. So, your referral to Finance, you don't want to do because you already referred it to Finance back on July 31. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, consideration of legislation for the first time?
Proposed Ordinance 33-2023, appropriations referred to Finance. Amending and supplementing Ordinance Number 66-2022, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2023, by appropriating from unappropriated general funds, the sum of $4,500 to the materials and supplies line item within the lands and buildings category within Program 7, General Government, subparagraph. And finally, appropriating from unappropriated general funds, the sum of $13,248.75 to the capital outlay line item within the police department subcategory within the Program 1, Security of Persons and Properties, subparagraph, and declaring an emergency. And then, we have Proposed Ordinance 34-2023, it's the creation of the VOCA and SVAA funds for Victims Advocate. It's referred to Finance. It's amending and supplementing Ordinance Number 66-22, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2023, by creating, by the creation of a 2024 Ohio Crime Victims Assistance, subparagraph, containing a victim advocate category, containing a personal service, personal services line item and materials and supplies line item. And finally, by the creation of a 2024 Victims of Crime Act, subparagraph, containing a victim advocate category, containing a personal services line item, and declaring an emergency.
May I have a motion to accept these as a first reading?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for visitors to speak on legislation read for the first time.
Vicki DeShawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive. This has to do with the Proposed Ordinance Number 34-2023, creation of VOCA and SVAA funds for the Victims Advocate. At the September 7, 23 Finance Committee meeting, Chair Wireball stated the following: Regarding the fund creation, we create these victim funds yearly, which we do. We are not putting money in the fund, only creating it, so when the money for 2024 comes in for the Victims Advocate, we are prepared. We get money from the state, and then that pays our Victim Advocate. We just run the money through the city. Since Mr. Wireball's comment could make one believe that only the state of Ohio pays for the Victim Advocate's salary and benefits, I wish to clarify that in addition to the state, the City of Bucyrs also pays from its general fund for the Victim Advocate's salary, hospitalization, PERS, workers' comp, HIT, and office incidentals. In 2023, council approved $14,025 from the general fund monies for the Victim Advocate. Thank you.
Consideration of legislation read for the second time?
Proposed Resolution 225-2023, that's the investment policy referred to Finance, hereby approving the adoption of the Bucyrs City Investment Policy.
May I have a motion to accept this as a second reading?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Potter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for visitors to speak on legislation read for the second time. Seeing none, consideration of legislation read for the final time.
Proposed Ordinance 31-2023, Traffic Control Map, referred back to health and safety. It's amending Ordinance 25-2000 and the Traffic Control Map and File established by Sections 305.01, 305.02, and 305.03 of the codified ordinances of the City of Bucyrs, Ohio, to henceforth remove the no parking on the south side of Clinton Street for the entire length. And then we have Proposed Resolution 223-2023, that's the wastewater treatment plan that's referred back to public lands and buildings. It's authorizing and directing the mayor and the Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of Bucyrs, Ohio, to proceed with Arcadis US Inc., 7575 Huntington Park Drive, Suite 130, Columbus, Ohio, 43235, for implementation of the pre-construction tasks necessary for Option 2 as presented by Arcadis US Inc., for renovations to the Bucyrs wastewater treatment plant not to exceed $54,600,000.
May I have a motion to accept these as a final reading?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Granting permission for visitors to speak on legislation read for the final time?
Vicki DeShawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive. This has to do with Proposed Resolution Number 223, 2023, the wastewater treatment plant, and it's merely just some information. At the August 3, 23 Finance Committee meeting, concern was expressed that the public was not made away, made aware of Arcadis coming to the meeting to discuss the wastewater treatment plant project. At that time, Finance Chair Wireball stated, and I quote, "It's advertised twice a week. It wouldn't be advertised any differently than a regular meeting." In researching what notifications were made on Arcadis attending the Finance Committee meetings, I found the following. At the July 5 council meeting, the Service Safety Director was absent. His report was read by the mayor, and listed Arcadis was scheduled to come to the July 20, 2023 Finance Committee meeting at 6:00 PM. At the July 20, 23 Finance Committee meeting, the Finance Committee agenda listed Arcadis presentation. Arcadis then offered to return to the next committee meeting to answer any more questions from the committee or the public. At the July 31, 23 council meeting, the mayor was absent. The mayor had no report to be read. The Service Safety Director was absent, and his report was read by Myers, but it did not list Arcadis coming to the August 3, 23 Finance Committee meeting. Finance Chair Wireball also did not verbally inform the public during his Finance report that Arcadis was coming to the August 3, 23 Finance Committee meeting. And then finally, the Finance Committee agenda did not list Arcadis as being a topic that was going to be discussed. Thank you.
Anybody else? Referring back to originating committee, Proposed Ordinance 31-2023, refer back to health and safety. Proposed Ordinance 33-2023, refer back to Finance. Proposed Ordinance 30, that's 34, sorry, that's a typo. -2023, refer back to Finance. Proposed Resolution 223-2023, refer back to public lands and buildings. And Proposed Resolution 225-2023, refer back to Finance. Committee report on pending legislation, health and safety?
Health and safety is favorable to Proposed Ordinance 31-2023, the Traffic Control Map update.
Finance?
Finance is favorable to Proposed Ordinance 33-2023, the appropriations. Finance is favorable to Proposed Ordinance 34-2023, creation of VOCA and SVAA funds. And Finance is favorable to Proposed Resolution 225-2023, the investments.
Public lands and buildings?
Public lands and buildings is favorable to Proposed Resolution 223, 2023, the wastewater treatment plan.
Further consideration pending legislation, Ordinance Number 33-2023. For the second, third readings, the Proposed Ordinance 33-2023, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers and a second by Mr., I'm sorry, yes, a motion by Mr. Wire, Myers, a second by Mr. McKeever.
Myers.
Yes.
McKeever.
Yes.
Wireball.[1795.01] Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick? Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt Ordinance 33-2023?
So moved, second.
I have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Myers.
Young?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball? Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 33-2023 is duly adopted. Ordinance Number 34-2023, do I hear, for the second and third reading, I apologize, for the second and third reading, the Proposed Ordinance 34-2023, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved, second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Spiegel.
McKeever?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball? Potter?
Yes.
And Sherrick?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt Proposed Ordinance 34-2023?
So moved, second.
Steve?
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Young.
McKeever?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball? Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Ordinance 34-2023 is duly adopted. Resolution 223-2023, for the second and third readings, the Proposed Resolution 223-2023, do I hear a motion to adopt?
So moved, second.
I have a motion by Mr. Spiegel, a second by Mr. McKeever.
Spiegel?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball? Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
No.
Yep, no?
No.
All right, young?
Yes.
Resolution 223-2023 is duly adopted. Ordinance Number 31-2023, do I hear a motion to adopt?
So moved, second.
I have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Myers.
Young?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball? Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
No.
Spiegel?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ordinance 31-2023 is duly adopted. And we have, under old and unfinished business, you have the Brentwood's Festival Agreement in this spot?
It'll be at the, it's behind the legislation.
Very last page.
It's behind the legislation?
Yep, it'll be on the very last page.
This one?
Yep.
Does anybody have any questions about the agreement? Okay, moving on, do we have any newer miscellaneous business? We have, may I have a motion to excuse Mr. Wireball?
So moved.
Yes, sorry?
Finish that one, go ahead, finish the...
Do I have a second?
Yes, Mr. Young.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Young, do we excuse Mr. Wireball, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Yes, Mr. McKeever?
New business, do we need, there was a referral for changing the billlet?
Zoning, zoning administrator. Greg Travis's title is, uh...
Secretary.
Administrative Secretary, and it may be more appropriate, they didn't talk to you about it? I don't know, he just thought it may be more appropriate if he was the zoning clerk or the engineer in zoning.
Reflecting, okay.
Reflecting his actual job duties as opposed to administrative secretary.
So, does it need to be referred, or what?
Yeah, I would, we'd have to change it. It'd have to be referred to Finance, because it would be a change to the billlet.
Right.
Do, do we update the billlet early, or when do we...
As needed.
And that goes to?
Finance.
All right, I have a motion to change the billlet to Finance by Mr. McKeever, do I have a second? I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Would you have to change the manpower as well, is that position not listed on the manpower?
He's a union.
Oh, union, excuse me, gotcha, so it would just be biller, I apologize.
It's non-union, so it's not to the manpower. Yep. Oh, okay, then it goes, all right, yeah, it's, manpower is not union, that's right, trying to keep those straight.
Before you go through your referrals again and question from Ms. Wise, um, since you just updated everything, we had just previously gone through and removed some stuff, would that one get left on Finance, do you know, before we don't refer it?
Um, I, I have, I've left it on there, it's on other projects.
I could, I don't have my notes with me, I couldn't remember.
Yep.
And I had sent an email requesting a referral to Finance regarding the pay for the council clerk.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Young, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so we have the 2020, was there something else? Oh, I'm sorry. I have the 2023 OPWC project to finance appropriations for...
2024.
I'm sorry. Let me try that again, Jenny needs to go to bed. 2024 OPWC project to finance, um, appropriations for the pool salary line to Finance, reimbursement for the enterprise funds to Finance, um, appropriate funds for the Northwest Trunk Sewer Line to Finance, appropriations of the Unger Park and Bike Path as, to Finance, change in the billlet to Finance, and the clerk pay to Finance as well. Does anybody else have any referrals?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Oh, I have something to say.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. This, a couple weeks ago, Joyce Schiffer, who was a member of the altar for years, her husband passed away, I think we need to remember her in our prayers and to, uh, you know, let her know that we, we're thinking about her, she, she was along for a long, here for a long time.
Yes, she was.
And her husband will be missed, so, so.
That's for sure.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Totally different, but, um, were we sending that thing for Greg Travis to something to, because that wasn't...
That was the change of the billlet to Finance.
Awesome, sorry.
Nope, that's fine.
Make a motion to adjourn?